Head up with the building inspector on looking at that location and trying to correct that. We had some hazardous incidents, like we had two, three calls actually, on a hazardous smell, a toxic smell, which was down from the Hudson House. They were re-glazing their tubs and they were venting the, I guess, the tox- not toxic, but the smell out of the rooms, which was legally done through a duct out onto the porch. And one of the neighbors had called smelling a toxic fume that they were not feeling well. When I responded to one of the incidents, the person did not want to go to the hospital. They refused medical aid. They were just complaining about the smell. So that's if you see the hazardous spill slash material on the report, that's what that was. One other thing I wanted to let everybody know, the fraud cases were down. Again, it's tax season, so that's when we seem to get an uptick on people doing fraudulent tax returns and stuff like that lately. Again, as I mentioned last month, it's been the unemployment PPE from the government that is all over the country that people are filing for unemployment benefits through that. We did not have any of those this month. And I would again stress to everybody that's listening to the meeting or viewing the meeting, if you have any complaints about anything, whether it's a noise complaint, bicycles, kids, you know, out too late or whatever, please contact us. Contact us. Contact me either email or phone, or if you see me walking on patrol or in the car or come by the village hall, I'm still getting a ton of complaints a coup- not a ton, I shouldn't say that. I'm getting complaints weeks later on, hey, you know, I heard a loud noise the other night or my kids Nate, the kids were doing something down by the bandstand. And if you guys, if you don't call right away and we don't address it, it becomes a bigger problem because everybody wants to put all the complaints on Facebook and then by the time I get it, it's been, or I find out about it, it explodes all over the place. So if anything is, you know, a suspicious person or whatever, you see something out of the ordinary, give us a call. Let the over-strength duty respond. If it's nothing, then it's nothing, but at least we know about it. And that's it for me.
Okay, thank you, Larry. Okay, is Ruth Ann on?
Yep, I'm here.
Hi Ruth Ann, how are you?
Pretty good, and you guys? Beautiful out there. So I kind of combined my report and our minutes, so you have to bear with me. As far as our budget, we're okay. The Tots Park, we opened it up last Friday night, so people were there Saturday. Mark Daisley did a great job making the sanitation section. I drove by Saturday and I noticed that all the adults had masks on. Whoops, which was great. So we're, the top park is in good shape. Andrea Hudson has continued to work as far as getting the rest of the stuff that needs to done, which is the mulch and the sand. As you can see here, I'm going to continue to work with Andrea on formalizing the Tots Park agreement. We're going to work on getting their nonprofit number and the people that are on the applications, so I can bring that forward to the board so we can get that signed in the box. Continue, people continue, want to use the bandstand for their weddings. We have another application we're going to review next week for October. The scouts are going to go forward, both the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts are going to have talked to us and provide us information on using the pavilion for their bridging ceremonies in May and June, so that's nice. Hello? Yeah, my battery is not going to cooperate with me. The bandstand painting, we're going to go forward with that. We've been working with Matt Amato. But the commission met yesterday to go over what needs to happen and we're probably going to go out to bid or solicit some painting amounts because we'd really like it to be done in this year's budget and hopefully before May or June, if any we can. I'll probably going to go visit Jeff and see what we need to do to put that out to bid or just out to request painters to give us some information because it all can't be done by the sheriff's detail. The only new addition thing this, oh well, newest commission member Trevor Knight is interested in softball. He would like to discuss with the Phillips Town Recreation Commission, some members there. So a softball league, if not at least an annual event that we might have for softball, so more information to follow on that. Maybe when we have our community day in the fall, maybe we can include a softball game in that. It's one idea right now. We have a lot of events coming up.
Ruth Ann, on the bandstand repair and painting, I believe that the bills have to be received by the end of May.
Okay.
To fall into the 2021.
Thank you. It will definitely get done one way or the other by that date. I think it's really important that we have it looking nice. It's since just the fall, I've noticed a real issue, increased issue with it. I just wanted to bring your attention that the Putnam County Food and Wine Festival that is on the books and pencil for August 7th and 8th. The last time that was discussed, you were going to review that again in April, so I just bring that to your attention. The other two pieces on, on the, just what we did with the Tots Park. And the last piece is the Presbyterian Church gave us a very nice COVID plan for the use of the pavilion. So I took that and a few other things and put together a plan for the scouts using the pavilion or maybe in the future, anyone else who wants to use it in the near future, of all the things that they would have to do to follow, how many people could be underneath the pavilion, how many people could be in Mayor's Park, the use of the bathrooms and what that would entail. So that's, that's attached to my notes. If anybody has any questions or concerns, you can express them now or just send me an email. It's quite comprehensive.
Couple of things, Ruth Ann, just as far as monies go or spending, if it's under 5,000, 5,000 or under, you just, I can do an approval on that. That's all you need. So if it goes beyond that, then you need to have, you just need to go seek out, I guess, three bids. You don't have to do it informal, so as far as that goes. Second, you guys are doing a great job and the commission really, really are over the years. So I think this is been the most progress and I really, things really look good and I think that can be attributed to you at the helm, so thank you. I think you're doing a great job. As well as everybody there, but I really, I think you've done a great job. Great job on Tots Park. Thank you Heidi for getting this moving and all the people have put in. I wish we had that much excitement about the village as we do as the Tots Park and volunteers for that. But that said, a great job by everybody and way to, way to put that all together and the town highway or village highway for cleaning up and the Girl Scouts, they leave cleaning up and, and everyone chipping it. So nice job by everybody and please thank the commission for me, the rest of you.
I certainly will.
Ruth Ann, this is Jeff. Just one thing, I believe the commitment to the Putnam Wine and Food Fest was to get back to them in June. And not April, if I remember correctly.
I have April, so we can look at that. I don't know if they're going to, if they're going to schedule it for August, I think they need some lead time.
It seemed as if she had a good deal of, I mean, more flexibility than we expected. I recall June as well.
Yeah, we recently looked at the minutes and I think Fran looked at the video from the meeting and it was June that.
Okay. I'll correct that on my notes, but just want to bring it to your attention, so.
Ruth Ann?
Yes.
A couple of things. The Pavilion COVID Plan, I think that, that New York State requires attendees over two years old to wear masks. There's three. But you're right, overall, it's a fantastic plan. And then I also wanted to raise a, a small concern for, for your commission and for trustees that was raised by a resident who lives in one of the apartments along the waterfront. I guess the wedding on April 3rd. Now, I did not see this myself, so I am reporting a secondhand item, but the wedding had amplified music during the ceremony and the resident wondered about having the question of amplified music be part of an application, whether there would be amplified music or not. And again, secondhand, they were concerned about the, the conformance with the social distancing protocols that had been laid out in the plan by that party.
Okay. I think that at that time, we don't have a specific COVID plan for the bandstand. If it's over, I mean, that's why we have the police there and blocking it off so that over, to do the six feet. So we, I know we do have another event coming up there. So I guess I will have to look at that and be more specific. I'm trying to find the application now. I believe we do have something about amplification.
I wasn't sure.
Application, but I don't know if they've filled anything like that in.
I don't think in general, you're supposed to have amplification in the parks.
Okay, I think it's probably the one where they're using the Mayor's Park.
So maybe that's a hole we need to close in the, in the process. And then I guess as follow-up to what you've just reported, Ruth Ann, I don't remember. Do we ask, do we ask people renting the bandstand to pay for safety patrol while they're there?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right now, renting the bandstand is $250. Right now, we're charging people $350 because of the work that the police have to do as far as setting up the cones and blocking things off. So there is an additional fee of $100 right now for use of the bandstand. To, you know, to make up the difference because of the increased costs.
Is an officer there during the event or is it just the setup?
If Officer Burke is still here, he would be the one.
Yep, I'm still here. It depending on the length of the, of the occasion. If they are going to be there for a number, number of hours or is it just going to be a quick hour and gone? I would, I would have, I would have to bring in an officer in to stand there and do security slash policing and minimal by the PBA contract for recall would be three hours.
Got it.
At, at whatever rate the officer would be.
Yeah, just clarify, the highway department sets up the, set up the ropes and locked it up. Thank you. I was, I was down with my second COVID shot and I was going to go do it in Bugsy. Was nice enough to come down or someone did. We can talk then later, but anyway, thank you to those guys.
Thank you, Ruth Ann.
So no, we don't have a police presence there. We don't have a commission member there. We just charge them for the work that the highway department does. I thought it was the police department, but it's the highway department.
Well, and obviously if someone has a, a, some kind of complaint about an event, they can call, they can call the officer in charge. I mean, sorry, not the officer in charge, the officer on duty. Call, the officer on duty.
Yes.
I will, I will double check about the event that is going to happen if she gets all of her paperwork in. I guess it's May 29th. So I'll make sure that we have a COVID plan and a understanding about amplification.
Awesome.
Okay, thank you.
I like, I love you all, but bye.
Thanks, Ruth Ann.
You're welcome.
Okay, next, anything, any is Matt here from planning. Sorry, as I stumbled through that one. Anything from planning?
They did not submit anything.
Okay, any, we have zoning here, is Eric on?
Yes, hi, everybody.
Hi Eric, how are you?
I'm doing well.
Good.
There were two meetings in March of the ZBA. On March 4th, on 212 Main Street, the board continued the public hearing on an application to build an additional story on top of a non-conforming freestanding one-story garage. The architect submitted new drawings revised after the discussion of the previous meeting. The board determined that the addition qualified as a half-story in the new drawings. And now the only remaining variance question concerned the overhangs created because the new half-story was wider than the existing first story. The overhangs would increase several area non-conformities in violation of Section 134-19H. The board closed the public hearing and after weighing the five factors, voted to deny a variance for the overhangs. The applicant is still free to add the half-story, but it must not extend out farther than the first story on any side. Then we held a workshop for 34 Kemble Avenue. This was an application to convert the old BFW Hall into a preschool. After discussing with the applicant the grounds for her appeal, the board scheduled a public hearing for the next meeting. And that meeting occurred on March 18th and there, there we opened a public hearing for about 34 Kemble Avenue application to convert the old BFW Hall into a preschool. Now, this property is in the R1 zone. The code enforcement officer had determined that the plan complied with all aspects of the zoning code except for one. 134-7A allows for schools meeting State Department of Education requirements to operate in R1. But preschools such as the applicant school are licensed by a state agency other than the Department of Education. So the applicant was therefore asking the ZBA for an interpretation overturning the CEO's denial. The applicant pointed out that 134-7A refers to meeting requirements of the department not being licensed by the department. She stated that her proposed preschool in fact meets Department of Education requirements. The Department of Education offers a voluntary registration program to preschools. To complete this registration, a preschool must meet a long list of standards, pass an onsite inspection and file annual reports with the Department of Education. The standards cover matters such as buildings, fire and safety regulations, staff requirements, educational program and admission. These standards are defined in New York codes, rules and regulations. The board closed the hearing and then voted that meeting these standards constitutes meeting requirements of the Department of Education. The applicant is thus entitled under the code to open the preschool provided that she registers with the Department of Education and keeps the registration in force throughout the life of the school. And that concluded our meeting and, and that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Eric. Hey Eric, just out of curiosity, how, how, how wide or how much was the overhang? What was the distance on that?
It started out in one dimension and then he reduced it. It was about, I believe, 12 inches on each side at the not a lot.
That, yeah.
Super tight lot.
Yeah, it is, exactly. There was only like a 10-inch or setback remaining then on the, on the rear yard with the overhangs. So it was a very tight, very close.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your work. Appreciate it. Okay, town of Phillips Town. Is Bobby on?
Yeah. Good evening, everybody.
Bob, tonight, tonight might be the night. Can you say we're open yet?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I was going to say the first thing on agenda here that I have here is that the not 100% complete, but we're in there, okay? So we moved in yesterday, got the internet and phones working today, so we should be all be back in business tomorrow. Just a couple of items that still need to be done. I mean, the elevator's got it certified, but it does work. The treads on the stairs need to be installed. They're the major things, but besides that, we're, we're in there. So I don't know when we're going to have a grand opening, but we'll have one once, hopefully we can have people, many people around. It's a good thing.
It looks really good. It really does.
The building looks really nice. I gotta say, the outside looks fantastic. Inside looks really nice too. Really nice job. I gotta say, it came out very, very nice and a little bit longer than we anticipated, but hey, it's, it's, it came out nice. So that's what's the most, only thing that counts. So that was the first thing. Also too, last month I did indicate about the contrast between both Ambon's course, Garrison and the Phillips Town Ambon's course, we had a modification, but now they've been modified and they've been signed, so that's 100% completed. Also, like, you know, as you know, we've been having the COVID vaccines down at the rec center as, as for the county health. And I want to thank all the people who volunteer and all of the county workers who been there doing all that. And it's really well-run, I gotta say. I got both my vaccinations there and it was in and out within a half hour. You can't complain. So I did, did a great job staying with the North Highlands Firehouse and Drug World people. I let it, give them a lot of thanks as well. They're doing a fantastic job. And all the people who are volunteering greatly appreciate that. As you know, the Garrison Golf Course and the Stacey Air Festival is planned, opening in 2022. A little bit changed there as well. Originally it's supposed to be the 18-hole golf course, it's supposed to be into a nine-hole golf course. Now there's going to be no golf whatsoever after the end of next year. So I encourage every local golfer here in the Hudson Valley area to play it as many times as you can this summer and this fall and this spring coming up. So this is your last chance to get, get some golf in at the garrages. We passed resolutions last week regarding the solar. As I indicated the month before, we had an RFP was out. We watered the bid to solar power. We signed that last week, so we're moving forward solar on, on the, on the rec center. It's probably take another month or so before we actually get going, but all the paperwork's been signed and everything's in order. We also passed several resolutions for, to help our emissions and carbon footprint here. The aggregate, community aggregate program, we extended that as well. So it's a good thing. Oh, we also had a conversation with the owners of the Garrison Post Office last month. I mentioned that we had a lot of complaints about that. The actual owner, Ahmad Raouzou, his name is, he wanted, reached out to everybody in the community down there. Firsthand went to all of everyone's houses and spoke to them. He's making some changes and hopefully, you know, he's, you know, eliminated some trucks. Tell them they can't come at certain hours anymore, so hopefully that's going to resolve a lot of issues they have that's been happening. The planning board and zoning board are still meeting via Zoom. We still have an opening on the assessment board review if anyone's interested in doing that. That's it. Thank you very much. And stop by the town hall and take a look.
Did you have someone on Sheila Roush?
Oh yeah, forgot that one. Yeah, Sheila Roush spoke, oh, right. The new, she's got a new Phillips Town aging at the home. She did speak to us last week. They did start this over a year ago, but with COVID happening, they kind of like put everything on hold. So that's a group of volunteers who are going to assist elderly people so they can live in their homes on their own, but with assistance. She gave us a very brief overview of everything. That's all volunteer basis. So it's a great thing. And if anyone's interested in volunteering, reach out to her. I mean, it's, it's, it's a great program. I mean, a lot of people in our community are getting older and they, you know, really can't afford to go to a nursing home. Hopefully this is going to help them if they don't have family members around.
Brilliant.
Okay, thanks, Bob.
All right, everybody, thank you. Well, I'm going to have to jump off. I'm down here in New York City trying to work on a project and I gotta get to that as well, okay? If you need me for anything, just reach out.
All right, will do.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Bye, Bob.
Good night, everybody.
Start district review, Sean out?
Sean is not able to be on. He asked if I would read the report. Is that okay?
That's fine with me.
Okay, current applications. In March, we met two times. We approved a fence extension at 207 Main Street. And we approved the reconstruction of the porch at 8 Kemble Avenue, which sadly was destroyed in a storm. We determined the application for repairs of the porch at 25 Garden Street to be a replacement in kind. And the application was rescinded by the owners. We met for a final workshop with the owner of 212 Main Street, so the same project that Eric was just talking about regarding the expansion of her garage and scheduled that public hearing. We met for a final workshop with architect Joe Thompson on behalf of the Butterfield developer and about the two fam- single-family houses proposed for 61 and 63 Paulding. We conducted their public hearing and we approved both applications. We're satisfied that these properties create a softer transition between the multifamily condo complex and the historic residences along Paulding Avenue. For our monthly meeting on April 14th, we will meet with representatives of 32 Market Street to review a solar installation. Representatives of 34 Kemble, so the school project that Eric was referring to, to discuss modifications required for the nursery school. And representatives of 49 Main Street about a new store sign. We will also conduct the public hearing for 212 Main. Further art to our discussion about the updated maps in Putnam County. We are speaking with Shippo about the protocol for having our official map of record updated in Albany. And we will keep you informed of those requirements. I assume that's related to the design standards, Marie? Is that right?
No.
No?
No. The HTRB Chapter 64 refers to a map that is included in Chapter 64. There is no map in Chapter 64.
So the, it's for the ordinance, for the ordinance in the code. Got it?
Yes.
Regarding our public hearings, at the beginning of the pandemic, we wanted to make sure the public had ample time to review materials and adapt to the Zoom environment by requiring at least three weeks' notice on scheduled hearings. After the past year, we are comfortable that the public can fully participate with less advanced notice. And moving forward, we'll simply hold, we will simply hold public hearings as they naturally fall within our existing semi-monthly meeting schedule. This prevents the need to conduct too many extra sessions and force applicants to wait much longer before their hearings are conducted. Respectfully committed, submitted, Sean Conway, Vice Chair.
Thank you. Fire Company?
That's me again. Okay. So first wanting to point out that the, the Fire Company is in a drive for volunteers. They are particularly looking for folks who can volunteer during the day. Obviously, the village over time has a lot fewer people, a lot fewer, no, has fewer people working in the village during the day. And so most of our Fire Company members are out of the village during the day and they are looking for new members. So if you think this is something that you're up for, please contact Matt Steltz, who's the president of the Fire Company at coldspringfd@gmail.com. And the report for this month reflects that need. The North Highlands Fire Company is on automatic mutual aid response for our Fire Company between 6:00 AM and 6:00 PM during the week. And then our Fire Company assists North Highlands on the weekends. So there were 15 calls for March. Four were EMS assists, two were activated fire alarms, one was an outside rubbish fire. Two, excuse me, one carbon monoxide alarm. Mutual aid, one mutual aid to North Highlands Fire Department for a helicopter landing zone. One mutual aid to North Highlands Fire Department for an oil burner fire. Two mountain rescues for Breakneck and North Highlands and Cold Spring automatically respond to those together anyway. One motor vehicle accident, one elevator rescue, which we haven't heard in a while. And one outside odor investigation. And that's submitted by Tom Marigan, who is the chief.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, tree advisory, nothing, or is Jen on?
There's a written report, but Jen is not on.
What was that? Sorry.
There's a written report, but Jen is not on the call.
Okay, I don't have that report.
You want me to read it, Dave?
Sure. Was it in our packet? I don't get it. Or did she send it later?
It, it's in the packet, at least the one from yesterday.
I'm looking at it now and don't see it, but go ahead.
Okay, the tree advisory board held its regular public meeting on March 24th. It's a busy spring. We are currently working on dormant season pruning project. We have largely finished this project in the last several weeks. And the tree board volunteers have now pruned and trained 60 plus of our youngest village trees to encourage good structure and form as they grow. This is good for tree health now and also saves the village money in maintenance costs of mature trees later down the line. Two, spring planting. The village highway department has transplanted Two, spring planting, the village highway department has transplanted one new tree on Market Street this week, and will be planting four new trees the week of April twenty-sixth. Two of these four trees are funded by private donations from kind of village residents. We thank Bugsy and his crew for their partnership on this work. As William Blake writes, "The tree which moves some to tears of joy is in the eyes of others only a green thing which stands in the way. As a man is, so he sees." We are lucky to have a highway department that sees trees and as more than just a headache, happy National Poetry Month. Arbor Day celebration, April thirtieth. The village will be marking Arbor Day on April thirtieth with a decorated new tree planted in front of Village Hall at eighty-five Main Street and other decorations in tree pits around the village. We will not be holding an in-person gathering, but we'll be posting all week on social media to publicize and celebrate the day. We are proud to celebrate our fifth year as a designated Free City USA awarded to us by the Arbor Day Foundation in recognizing the, in recognition of the village's commitment to our public trees. Tree transplanting from old nursery area. The tree board has root-pruned its trees on the now-closed Village Tree Nursery Project site on Kemble Ave- Avenue in preparation for transplanting those trees in the fall to sites around the village and buttoning up the final closing down of the that test project. Contract work, the removal of a declining maple in McConville Park and a dangerous limb on Lower Main Street was scheduled this month after professional evaluation. Seven stump- stumps in tree pits on Main Street will be ground down on April nineteenth and sites prepped for future planting. Tree management plan updates, we are continuing to work to update our tree survey with new tree tag numbers and updating the tree management plan, respectfully, Jennifer Zwarich.
Thank you, Jen, thank you. Okay, uh, moving along here, uh, we have Chamber.
Good evening, um, thanks for having me, um, our report this month is as follows. Um, the Chamber held our monthly virtual meeting on March twenty-third with a presentation and discussion on the economic development portion of the draft update of the Phillips Town Comprehensive Plan, um, also known as the PCP. Uh, Putnam Legislature Nancy Montgomery, the Director of Putnam Tourism, Tracy Walsh, and the Director of Putnam EDC Kathy Abels were present at the meeting. A presentation was made by Nat Prentice, who chairs the PCP Update Committee. Committee members' comments on the draft of the updated PCP can be emailed to natprentice@mac.com. Um, next month's Chamber Breakfast Meeting will be held by Zoom on Thursday, April twenty-ninth from nine thirty AM to ten forty-five AM, Katie Lieberman and Davis McCollum, the Directors of Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival, will be sharing an update on the plans for their new site. Local officials and members of the public are welcome and encouraged to join this meeting and bring your questions. RSVP at the Chambers homepage, um, website, which is coldspringnychamber.com. Um. In other news, the Chamber is pleased to announce that the Keep Cold Spring Beautiful Visitor PSA Camp Play Campaign has been launched. We'd really like to thank the Village Trustees and Putnam County's Department of Tourism for collaborating with us on this project focused focused on encouraging responsible visitor behavior. Posters have been printed and put in storefront windows and yard signs have been placed in the green strip along the Metro North Walkway leading to Main Street from the train platform. The Chamber plans on providing the village with a proposal by the end of this week, uh, complete with visuals and locations for the trash applications, um, and additional signage locations for the trustees' approval. We look forward to presenting the proposal and hope to move forward on implementing this campaign. In tandem with the village's opening of the public rest- restrooms, the Chamber is working on organizing volunteers to man the visitor's center info booth. The info booth's services provide wayfinding tools and guidance to visitors, including distribution of maps and brochures for attractions around the area, offering hiking and safety tips, sometimes they'll recommend somebody wearing sandals or flip-flops to not do break- breakneck, for instance, um, and recommendations for some of the less visited attractions in the village. These services aim to prevent crowds from bottlenecking at popular spots and prevent accidents and emergencies on hiking trails and to address other issues that may arise during high-traffic times in and around the village. The Chamber manage- manages the info booth and grants honorary Chamber membership to all volunteers for the donation of their time and services. Anyone interested in volunteering for the info booth this year should contact, contact the Chamber at info@coldspringnychamber.com. In preparation of reopening, we plan on doing a spring cleanup of the info booth office space in the next couple of weeks. Ideally, we hope to reopen the info booth by or before Memorial Day weekend pending the trustees' approval. Our volunteers have made several requests that we hope the trustees will help us address as we work to up- to update our annual visitor booth agreement with the village. Their requests are as follows, full liability insurance coverage for volunteers on duty, Wi-Fi installation and service, uh, the volunteer support, the visitor's booth is something of a service dead zone for cell phone reception, and the Chamber um offers to cover the cost of its installation and monthly service with the trustees' permission. Um, and uh, the visit is, the volunteers ask for a parking spot designated for volunteer vehicles while they're on duty, preferably next to the visitor's center for the ease and convenience of our senior citizen volunteers. Um, so we respectfully ask that the Village Trustees consider these requests and let us know if we have approval to include them in an updated agreement, which we can draft and send to the trustees for review and um legal assistance. Um, and the last part part is, um, the Chamber has expressed gratitude to the Village Trustees and Highway Department team for their decision to reopen the public restrooms beginning this month. As per the Health Department, recommend the Chamber feels the custodial services for the public restrooms on Sa- Saturday are still needed when traffic is at its peak and the facilities need servicing the most. We understand and respect the Highway Department team, which works hard all week long, um, needs that day off weekly, and that the cost of bathroom sanitation, along with other demands placed upon the village, continue to grow as a result of Cold Spring's growing popularity among regional visitors. The Chamber has offered our assistant with finding funding, our assistance with finding funding to cover this expense, it is our understanding that the demands created by heavy visitor traffic in the village has put a disproportionate burden on the village of Cold Spring, and that as a regional economic driver, oh, excuse me. Oh, yeah, and as a regional economic driver, supporting the cost and management of tourism infrastructure here should not fall solely on the shoulders of a village. The Chamber intends to reach out to the town of Phillips Town, Putnam County, and New York State to ask for greater financial assistance to address and manage tourism in Cold Spring. Um, and there was one other point that um that I wanted to just report, um, the Chamber's partnering with the Ecological Citizens this month um, for their Earth Day event, and um I'll just read the the blurb real quick, um, "Join your neighbors on Earth Day, uh, four twenty-two from six PM to seven PM to launch the Philip- Phillips Town Fight Dirty Campaign and learn about how we can all take action to help Phillips Town reach its goal of carbon neutrality by twenty forty." The online event will include musical performances by Dar Williams and Tall County country, pardon me, Tall Country, um, the Town Board signing a groundbreaking local carbon neutrality resolution, the launch of the interactive Phillips Town Fight Dirty website, and a chance to win an electric one lower. So we'll be um sending the link out for that with our newsletter, and it's also certainly available at um Ecological Citizens um, social media and website, so that's it for our report this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, one question, Eliza, um, you volunteered to draft an updated agreement, can you send that to us?
Yes, we will, yeah, absolutely, we'll try and get that done um by the end of the week, uh. Do you guys approve of um the three asks that the volunteers had for us? Can I include that in the draft?
I think we have to, I don't know, do we talk to Kieran yet about is there a problem or cost or anything related since COVID's going on? Last year, I think we were able to, but have we contacted Kieran yet this year?
No, I have not contacted him yet.
Okay, well, I would do that, make sure nothing's changed with that before we agree to that. And I think we should bring the uh parking to the uh parking committee. We're meeting tomorrow.
Okay, um.
For the Wi-Fi, what's the cost to the village?
None, the Chamber's volunteering to cover the cost, I think it's gonna cost us probably about forty bucks a month. Um, and we've set aside uh in our budget money to put towards um any improvements that the visitor center needs. Um, so that was one thing that we we could offer to do, and we can um manage the installation and everything if that's um, approved by you guys.
I think that's great, myself, um, and I think that the um, I'm I'm grateful to the Chamber for for reaching out and trying to help um, carry some of the costs of of visitors to the village through things like um, the Wi-Fi, but also helping to advocate for some relief for the village from the other municipalities that benefit from the tourism that we bear here, so thank you for advocating for us.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we'll get back to you soon as we can on the uh insurance and parking.
Okay, um, in the meantime, I'll I'll update it with the general idea that it's going in that direction, and then you guys can adjust it as you need.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, thank you, have a good evening.
You too, take care. Uh, Matt, you're finally out, or no, yes, yes, you are.
All right, if you're ready, I'm ready. All right, so uh, the reservoirs are a little bit higher than they were last year, uh, the system usage is down twenty percent from where we were at this point last year, we had rainfall of a about two and a quarter inches, so we have water pretty, pretty well impounded up there by uh the Beaver Dam as well, so we're looking pretty good entering the warmer weather. Uh, all the bacteriological monthly samples were found in good standing. Just got the West Tech quote for the rehab uh work up at the filters, it's significantly more than what I originally thought it was going to be, uh, so we're still working on that, looking for additional quotes to get that in. Uh, the initial PFO, PFOS, PFOA sampling, you know, came back and the samples were found in good standing, so that's good. Uh, we also did hydrant flushing last week, so that went relatively smooth until we had the water main break on the seventh, where a six-inch ductal iron main uh broke, had a three-inch hole blow out at the bottom of the pipe on Marion Avenue in the Wall Street intersection. Uh, we had it repaired and back in service by seven fifteen with the assistance from South Padilla Excavating. Uh, had the SCADA PC hard drive fail up at the water plant. Uh, Managed Technologies was able to clone the hard drive and set it up in the RAID format, which the SCADA PC should have been set up for originally. Uh, so all good on that, uh, Catskill Project has been relatively quiet and still reaching out to surrounding uh municipalities, looking for backup water sources. Uh, Vincent Parent from the Health Department's gonna be on-site tomorrow for a quick walkthrough, where hopefully we'll get to discuss that a little bit more. Uh, and then we've already talked about the Badger Endpoint Upgrade, which it's looking like it's gonna be sex metering, unless I can find another company, and then try and get some quotes for that. Onto the sewer, uh, took in seven point five million gallons, average of two hundred and twenty-four thousand gallons a day, uh, all the results were in pretty good standing, it's a typo, wasn't nine hundred and ninety-four percent removal. Uh, so sorry about that, uh, still recovering from the snow delay on the sledge hauling off plant, so we took out an extra truckload uh the past month. We do have the quotes back in for the jetting, cleaning, and inspection, and I believe we're gonna be going forward with Cook Septic. I'll just reach out to them and get that scheduled, but we're looking to get that done before the end of May. Uh, we had the flow meter and chart recorder annual calibration down there at the sewer plant, everything's all good. The annual flow certification form was submitted to DEP on uh the twenty-third, uh, private wastewater line from Pearl Street. Sal had made a temporary repair, uh, Nelsonville had asked if it would be feasible to install a manhole that would be greatly beneficial to them keeping up on the maintenance of that private line. We had spoken about that, I believe, we're just looking for final approval. South Padilla was to give me specs on what they uh planning on installing, and then after reviewing that, it should be approved and moving forward with the board's permission. Uh, the emergency portable generator, uh, the newest one in the fleet, that uh had a local and lockout alarm that we had serviced by peak power under warranty, so that was good. And we still have to repair the water leak on the sewer plant grounds, which should be done within the next two months.
Matt, Matt, on the uh manhole cover, that's gonna be picked for by Nelsonville or by the residents of, okay?
Yeah, they're taking care of it, uh, the mayor's text that we review anything that they're putting into it, just to make sure that it's good. Not sure if they're gonna go out to engineering on it and totally address the line, or if this is just something in lieu of trying to get everything piecemeal together for better maintenance of that line.
Gotcha.
So, and I talked to uh the trustee Winwood up there, um, I just, uh, well, emailing, um, I guess, are they, you know, just, we're just fine with me work through you. I told him if they wanted to, they could have a request and send it to the board, but if they're working for you and and you're fine if we have specs or whatever, uh, I I'm not sure where that was at, but if you need any assistance, let me know.
Yeah, the verbally uh, from what me and Sal have been talking about, it seems feasible, like I said, he was going to a pre- uh approach Mayor Bowman with uh his design, and then go from there, so as soon as I hear back from them, I'll let you guys know.
Okay. They should probably put in a request or just have something that's saying if any damage is done while working there to that line, that's their responsibility, but.
I think it's still pretty far away from the actual villages' collection system, so up and downstream is still gonna be on that section, but.
Okay.
On the, on the private line?
Correct.
Okay, thanks, Matt.
Thank you, have a good night.
You too, take care.
Night.
Night.
Next, uh, Building Department, or no, is that where we're at, yeah, Building Department?
Nothing submitted.
Nothing submitted, okay, um, Highway Department. Bugsy on? No?
Yes.
Bugsy, you're muted.
Mister Downey.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Hear you now.
Okay, uh, good evening, folks, let's see. For the month of Mar- uh, let's see, garbage, we had fifty-seven point seven seven tons this month, recycling was nineteen point seven eight. Um, for the month of March, we repaired fences at the Boat Club and at the intersection of Mountain Avenue and Fiskville Avenue, cleaned out Tots Park of leaves and debris. We cleaned up heavy silt areas from winter plowing, washed out all the garbage cans on Main Street and the dock, repaired eight-foot curb at ninety-nine Main Street. We cut down the Wish Tree Trunk on Main Street, cleaned up all the tree trimmings from TAB, and also met with Jen Zwarich to set plans for tree planting and stump grinding, serviced and painted benches and put out on Main Street. Um, we used three yards of item four to fill potholes on uh Belvedere and Hamilton Street. Um, we started putting out flags on Main Street, Lunteris, started updating catch basin assessment inventory, started clearing out overgrown section of highway garage lot for the relocation of the storage container. Um, we serviced all the chainsaws, transferred spinner and motor onto new housing of two-yard salter, then serviced the two and four-yard salters for summer storage, installed new brushes, blade, what's that?
Yes, somebody was dying, nothing, keep keep going.
Okay. We installed new brushes, blade, and safety flap on the street sweeper, then serviced. Um, Hudson River Truck and Trailer had to install a new auxiliary switch wiring harness. Hudson River Truck and Trailer had to install a new auxiliary switch wiring harness on the two thousand sixteen F three fifty, and we installed a new blade on the snow throw attachment and service for summer storage. For the month of April, we'll be cleaning streets, repairing catch basins and painting sidewalks.
And where are we with the dump truck purchase?
I have a meeting with Kevin Burke on Thursday, but I'm gonna have to reschedule it because I have my second vaccination shot on Thursday, so it's a good chance I will probably not be in on Thursday and Friday. And I'll have to schedule it with him for next week, and we're gonna set up the whole specs for it and we can get it out to bid from there.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You as well.
Justice Court. March Monthly Report finds forfeited bales and civil penalties, thirty-one hundred dollars, parking tickets, three thousand seventy dollars, civil fees, twenty dollars, mandatory state surcharges, twelve hundred thirty-seven dollars, a total of seven thousand four hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Okay, let's see. Anything from the trustees?
I wanted to say thanks to some volunteers, if I could.
Absolutely.
Okay, so I wanted to thank the folks who helped distribute the instructions for taking the police reform survey. Folks fanned out across the village, and I'd like to recognize Christine Bocor, Andrea Connor, Sean Conway, Gretchen Dykstra, Hillary Hart, Karen Jackson, Ryan Keating, Susan Kenny, Lynn Miller, Leo Sacks, Becca Ty, Candice Galinsky, and trustees Bender and Early, and also Mayor Mirandi. So thank you for doing that. We have delivered twenty-two paper surveys to date. I think Fran might be able to give an update on where we are with electronics, but I think we're somewhere around twenty-six percent response rate, which is huge. So I'm glad that the, I'm glad that the paper delivery system is working, and thank you to everyone who's responded. If you haven't yet responded, please do. We'd love to hear from you.
Okay, may I?
Yes, you may.
If I echo, I will be fast. Kathleen, just to update you, we're at forty-three percent response rate on email surveys.
That's great.
You, rough idea, and you know that I'm not home, so I don't have actual numbers, but I'm reading off a phone and a tablet. Roughly, we have sent our requests to taking out the ones that bounced back six hundred and twenty-five people. We sent them, you know, email links to the survey. Two hundred and sixty-seven have returned from what I gather, and I'm looking, as I say, at our phone numbers. About five hundred and fifty-four of those were the emails that we got from Jeff, from the listener that he uses. About seventy-one requests were from people who got our cards or saw the ads and came back and requested that they get a link, and each day I'm still getting a couple of them, and I'm sending them out daily, so three or four or five a day. I have so far before I left town entered, I believe, three paper survey responses. I have not seen more than that. I don't know how many more maybe in the office this week, but I will catch up to them as soon as I can. So at this point, for all of the email links that have been sent to people, forty-three percent of them have responded, which I think is a phenomenal number. I will give you more of an in-depth report early next month as I break down some of the questions and give you percentages on some of the answers as we go along, but that's what I have as of now.
So great.
Anything else? Okay, before we get into new business, is there anyone that has questions or concerns on the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget? It's a public hearing, which I will ask the board to close if no one is on at this point, but if anyone's on would like to comment, please raise your hand or do whatever's needed.
I don't see anyone.
Okay, that's not unusual, but for the budget public hearing. So, okay, with that, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you, Michelle, again, for a great job. Okay, so moving ahead, new business approved final listing for the Fireman Service Award. I'll make a motion to approve the final listing.
Second.
Any questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next discussion on relocating the crosswalk, or no, sorry, Resolution eight, twenty twenty-one. Intent to continue the CCA program.
This is the discussion we had last week with the presenter, correct?
Yes.
Correct. And this is, as I understand and read through, this is a non-binding resolution. But it allows the CCA to include the village in the RFP that they send out.
Right.
So I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution zero eight dash two zero two one.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
There was in the presentation from, I'm sorry, Jeff, I don't remember his last name last week, reference to twenty-five hundred dollars available from the organization for renewables projects, and I wondered if we might open the suggestion for funding to folks in the community who might have ideas for projects that could be funded by that twenty-five hundred. I know Phillips Town used their money for refrigeration initiative they've undertaken, so maybe someone has an idea for how we could use the twenty-five hundred dollars we've earned in the village.
Always open for suggestions. I don't have anything offhand that twenty-five hundred would cover, but.
Maybe some of the village folks who are involved in the in the, the environmental, I can't remember the name of the organization.
What about the electric charging station?
Oh, that's a great idea.
I don't know if, is that costing us anything? I'm not sure what our agreement was on that. It might be, it might be, I would definitely put it towards that.
Wasn't that supposed to have been done a long time ago?
I think because of COVID, it was derailed a bit, but we did get a request and about, and sent an easement, which I sent to John weeks ago, and he's was on vacation and then just catching up, so he hasn't got it back to me. But it's an easement to use the property to, to install a station, so it's moving ahead, but I can't remember our financial obligations, if any.
Well, for the, for the benefit of, well, I don't know, but for the benefit of the public who are on the call, what is the location?
Oh, it's just on the other side of the tracks. It's kind of the dead end area by the dance studio.
Oh, right on.
If you come down, if you go north on Market, come to Main and take a right, it's a dead end, it faces the tracks and.
Great idea.
Four spots there or so, and so two of them will be dedicated to the, the electric station.
Excuse me, David, the resolution needs a roll call vote.
Oh, okay.
So trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Bender?
Yes.
Trustee Foley?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Okay, anything else from the, sorry, we're jumping, dumping down here now. Old business. Established date and hours for bathroom reopening. Is Bugsy still on the line? I think it's this weekend. I'm not positive. He had to clean and paint, he had to paint some.
Bugsy has left the building.
I thought, I thought he had said Thursday, Jeff.
Ah, yes, when I spoke to Bugsy last week, he had said that this Thursday, as he had to paint the floor, and there was some work on tiles that needed to be completed first.
Okay, so they'll be open shortly, if not Thursday.
Yeah.
Friday, hopefully. Okay, so yeah, it sounds like there just, there was a few things, get them back and running. And the hours, have we discussed that or no?
I spoke to Larry about, because the police, we do that.
Right.
So he said the person coming off the midnight shift, that's usually the last thing they do before going back to the office is open it, and this way they know that's their last thing to do before the end of the shift. If we do it at ten o'clock, there's no guarantee that whoever's on that B shift is available if they're out on a call. And then closing, whatever time we want to be closed, you know, they'll put it on the schedule and they'll do the best they can, providing that they're not out on a call or.
Okay, well, the morning sounds, sounds totally sensible, so.
It's about eight AM, right? When that shift changes?
It changes at eight. They usually head back to the office between seven and seven thirty, do their paperwork and stuff, so.
Cool.
Okay, and then closing, we definitely don't want to open at night, but I'm not sure what time was, is, I think around seven-ish. Don't know. Thoughts on that?
I would say five.
I would say later. I would say minimum seven.
I would, I would go. I would go to seven, but it wouldn't go much later than that.
Yeah, it wouldn't go any later than seven, that's for sure.
So seven seems like a compromise.
We haven't heard from Heidi.
Seven seems good to me, too.
Okay, we'll see how, see how that works.
That'll be, whatever the officer is busy doing, it may be a little bit before, a little bit after.
Right, yeah, exactly. It's not like we're in that, in that area, in case he's out somewhere. Okay, so we'll tell, Jeff, can you let Larry know that and see if he's okay with that?
Yep.
All right. Thank you. All right, discussion on relocating the crosswalk at Oak Street ninety. I missed the excitement of last meeting, I think. Any further comments? I did send you guys photos of puddles on both sides. It seems like less I'm missing something. It seems like both sides, as far as water goes, they both collect there. They're, they're almost identical, like same curb goes around. There's a curb cut on both sides that goes into Oak Street, not onto Main.
It was also the lighting that was a concern, which was one of the reasons I was in favor of a resolution, is that where the streetlight hits at night, it's much darker on one side, so, you know, you can see if you're stepping into a puddle or not, if it's on the south side.
I, the way the light is, well, I don't know, I think that might be. I'm not sure. The light is definitely over the other side, but I don't see how it's being blocked that much on the, on the other side. There's an oak tree that's that's there, but I don't know. I walked up, I walked out every day almost to go over to Food Town, so I've, I've never had a problem there.
Well, you've also got the light that, that emanates from the gas station until, I think, ten o'clock is when those, those lights go off. So there is, there is light coming at the crosswalk from another location. I went down this afternoon and took some pictures. Sorry, it's spring and there's bugs flying in the room. The, there is no, there, there is handicap access, ADA access on the Oak Street side of the intersection where the, the sidewalks that along Main Street that terminate at Oak have ramps. I don't know if they're currently compliant, but they are at least, it is ramped on the, on the Food Town side, the Plaza side. It just drops off from the curb, so there's no, there's no entrance there. And if, if the sidewalk were to be moved, I imagine that there would need to be comply, I mean, currently it doesn't comply where, where it terminates on the west side anyway, but I imagine if there were movement, there would need to be compliance with ADA on that side. I can see arguments on both side. I still think that if, in order for us to, to pass a resolution, we need to show public support beyond one person. So I would, I would advocate for, for folks who are concerned about it to contact the village board to know that it is a, a, a larger concern, but I think no matter, no matter, at some point, that ADA access is going to have to be dealt with, whether it's on the north side or the, the south side, because it's just a curb drop off.
Yeah, so a couple of things. One is, I think I said curb cut, I meant the ADA compliant. It's, it's fairly new, and they look like they're definitely up to, up to snuff. I think one thing that there was a concern also walking on the sidewalk, I think that the owner in that corner property needs to be contacted, their bushes are coming. They come over the hedges and then go into the, I mean, over the fence that they have there and then go into the sidewalk, so it definitely is an obstruction and they need to cut those back. I, I personally don't think it needs to be moved, and I agree that we, public support should mean public should be concerned, and from what I heard, you asked if he would, you know, get some names or whatever, and I think that's more than reasonable.
I believe, I believe that, I think, I, I believe it was Heidi who sent us the list of twenty-four, I guess, talking points that the owner sent to us, and one of them basically says, two of them say, members of the Board of Trustees are elected by the public, and therefore, if we do a resolution, he feels that that's public support because we're elected by the public, and it definitely is not. That's got nothing to do with the public support that the DOT is asking, I don't believe, for this, and so, you know, as Kathleen said, members of the public, if you think that needs to be moved, then you need to contact us as best we can. I, I have not gone by there in the dark, or if I have, I haven't paid attention. But from what I could see, well, the light is on the south side of the intersection. The tree that's supposedly is blocking the light is on the north side of, of the crosswalk, so I'm not sure how the tree on the north side of the crosswalk is affecting the light that's on the other side of the intersection, because you've got light, crosswalk and then tree, unless I'm totally missing something, so I do have to go by when it's dark.
It's also one of the newer streetlights. I took note, I did look at, I mind, it was raining when I went at night, but it is, it was, it is one of the newer LED streetlights, so it is very bright. It has a, it has a focused pool of light, unlike the old streetlights, so it's a, it's a narrower cone of light, but it is much brighter than the older streetlights at that location.
So I'm not sure how we should follow up with this, if she can, must there's some public support, we would reconsider, but I, I don't think it rises to the level of contacting DOT and asking them to move it.
Well, Jeff, did, did you say that you had communication with DOT?
Yes, I spoke with them yesterday.
And?
Just a couple of things as far as the, putting it on the schedule, should we supply the resolution, all the documentation? It'll be done, as you said, just depends on their workload, where their crews are. You know, we get added to the schedule. She couldn't say how long it would take for them to do it. The other option is for the village to do it. We would still have to provide the resolution, they would still have to approve it, but the village could, could do the work at our, at our expense, too, so they wouldn't reimburse us.
Are we talking painting the crosswalk or moving it?
Moving it.
So, so we would have authorization to move it?
They would give us authorization. We would still have to provide the resolution, and they would issue us a permit if we wanted to do it, or we could wait for them to do it. As far as refreshing the current crosswalk, that's scheduled for twenty twenty-three. That is the next time, said, unless it's really in such disrepair that it needs to be redone, you know, twenty twenty-three is the next time that it would be done.
So for those of you who examine, have examined the, the area, do the upright signs which indicate the presence of a crosswalk also need to be moved?
I can look at the photographs I took today. I'm not, I don't remember in my head, but I can.
They, they would need to be moved.
Yes, that's what I thought.
Yeah. Yeah. For sure. And I think that we, I mean, I don't know that we would have to be, have to come into compliance, but I imagine that if you're relocating a crosswalk that you would need to come in, you would need to comply with ADA requirements.
Well, what's interesting about the current, current crosswalk, it is, it has no, it does not identify any, no parking on either side of the crosswalk.
You're right.
North or south of the cross. North or south of the crosswalk, on either the east side or the west side. And it would seem to me that, that, that should also be done, regardless of where the crosswalk is.
And is that our responsibility or the state's responsibility?
I think it's the state's responsibility that also exists for the crosswalk at the tennis courts. There is no indication of no parking in any distance north or south of that crosswalk.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, it's also should be ADA compliant, I mean, don't, don't we want it to be ADA compliant?
Yes.
It seems, yeah. Yeah, sorry, go ahead, Fran.
DOT says, sure, village, you can do it, then it's going to fall onto us, and that's not an inexpensive project.
But it is a service and there's a lot of seniors who live around that area.
You know, look at on Main Street and we know what we went through to get all of that done, all of those ADA compliant, make sure that the parking was within twenty feet of each crosswalk and so on and so forth. That should be the DOT's responsibility, that's their street. You know, they're very happy to push it off onto us.
We can follow up on, we can follow up, or Jeff, if you could ask them about saying that there's no, there's no ADA compliant ramp on the other side, I mean, that should be the responsibility regardless of.
That's their, the state is non-compliant, not the village, and that needs to be pointed out, you're right.
And, and the other, the other problem is the, the no parking, on both in the north and the south portion of the eastern, west sides, north and south portions of the east and the west sides, yes. Would seem to me that that's what, that's what should be done.
I think we can ask, request that and see what they say, you know, the order and.
It seems like, it seems like. Seems like a good start to, to bring those, those issues to their attention.
Okay, so. Moving along, I guess, I don't know, what was the, I mean, did we really resolve that? I don't, it sounds like we're not going to ask, request them to move it unless we have more support, so I guess we throw the ball back in.
Bruce's lap.
Well, and the state, right? We asked Bruce to demonstrate public support and we asked the state to, or we inform the state that they are not compliant with the ADA and the parking signage.
Right, two different, two different things, we can follow up, I mean, we will follow up with the state and see if they'll do anything. But as far as moving the crosswalk, if we don't have support, then then I'm not, we're not following through with that, that's what I'm hearing.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and in terms of the seniors, most seniors live south of the crosswalk. Most seniors live on either Chestnut Ridge or Butterfield, those are the two senior areas. And they have a different crosswalk they can use, which is the crosswalk at the intersection of Benedict. Which has an ADA ramp on the, on the east side. And I think there's an ADA ramp on the west side. There's definitely an ADA ramp on the east side.
Which is a separate question than, than the need for crossing from Chestnut, Butterfield, but that is not, that, that was, that was something that was an issue in the site plan review and with the DOT.
No, no, that has nothing, it has nothing to do with Butterfield, right?
Meaning, meaning recognizing that, that, that there is, that there is, there seems, there had been complaints of insufficient crossage at that point. And right now, what seniors have is that crosswalk at Benedict.
Sorry, Heidi had said that there were many seniors that use.
Understood.
Crossing, and I was just pointing out that the majority of seniors are south.
In that direction, yeah, I'm acknowledging that, that crossing is an issue in multiple locations along the highway there.
Okay, but let's not get into that right now, because we can go through the whole village with the parking, we're crosswalk problems. There are a number more that we should address, too. Okay, so if we can get back, Jeff, would you mind like just shooting him an email? And saying, public support, and that the board is not public support. We can entertain that. Okay, next is update on the utility termination, the moratorium law, a long one. I believe, Marie, you've been back and forth, there's.
So Jeff has, Jeff has this all in hand.
Okay.
Yeah, we've been back and forth discussing with John. In a nutshell, there are about fifty residents or fifty accounts that are delinquent that we would normally send over to the county to have these added to the taxes for this year. Because these people have not been notified of the changes in the termination law, they have to be given the opportunity to be entered into a DPA, a payment plan agreement. We are going to this week, we've identified the fifty accounts, we're going to send them a letter, they will have until May first to contact us as to whether or not they want to enter into a payment plan agreement for their past two balances. Come May first, if they do not get back to us, we will send those over to the county for re-leveying. One of the things that we discussed last week is that we wondered the impression that you could not re-levee whatsoever. NICOM has a different interpretation of the proposed law, and their interpretation is that only those customers who are in a payment plan cannot be re-levee. Anybody else at this point, with the expiration of the, the current law, you can re-levee, so.
Say that again, who, who can or cannot, who, who are or are not in a.
Only those who are in a payment plan agreement cannot be re-levee.
Got it.
But one other, for, one further point. The prohibition against re-leveing is not effective with the, the law that expired March thirty-first. It is only effective with the law that has not yet been signed. However, John's counsel is that since we did not notify people when, earlier, we need to give them that opportunity for the DPA.
In a separate mailing from the, the April billing.
They will get a letter going out, that'll go out tomorrow, probably tomorrow, that Marie, thank, I thank her for drafting the bulk of it. So we'll be sending out letters tomorrow to those fifty, they will have until May first. We have spoken with Lisa Johnson at Real Property who prepares our taxes. And we, so we do have the time to be able to do this. Then come May second, send her the re-levees, and they can apply that then to the bills and we can still get the bills and tax bills back here in time. And do the preparation that's needed.
Right, and, and none of this applies to sewer, it's only water.
Correct.
Is there any burden of proof on the, the delinquents to prove that they actually have financial difficulties? Or can they just say, I have financial difficulties?
All they have to do is say, all they have to do is ask for it, basically.
Really?
Yes, there, there's no burden of proof.
Yeah, we've, we've talked to three or four municipalities that are either cities or villages. As it turns out, it doesn't matter whether you're a city or a village relative to the, the old law. And they have had none.
No, no people signing up?
Correct.
Staff people that don't pay.
Maybe they, maybe their communication about the opportunity has been. Yeah, I don't know.
So, you know, as we talked about last week, the majority of the people on the list wanted to go on their taxes, so it gets paid through their escrow account.
Right.
And they're not typically into their pocket, so that's.
Okay.
That, which is where Dave's, Dave's point about burden of proof is important, right? Because that's a very different reason. Going, wanting to get to go to your escrow is a very different reason than unable to pay.
Not required.
Right, not required, but that's problematic.
But if they, if they request to go on the payment plan, then they lose the benefit of having to go to the rest to get paid on their escrow account.
Right.
Okay.
So what happens next?
And as Jeff said, we're sending out a letter.
Yeah.
We will send materials to the county on May first, May first or May second.
And water bills will go out as scheduled, while they're supposed to go out by Friday, we'll probably be pushing it back to Monday or Wednesday in order, so if you get letters out first, and then Anne has to do the re-levee, we've asked, I've asked Anne to step back and not do things as she normally would do for the bills to last two days that she has been in, so, so we have this resolved, so she's a couple of days behind.
Do you need any extra hands to help stuff envelopes?
No.
No, it's only fifty letters, so.
Okay.
That goes relatively quick.
Okay, approval of minutes, like a motion to approve March eighteenth, Village Board meeting minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, I'm gonna make a motion to approve March twenty-third, Village Board minutes.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one Village Board meeting, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. And finally, March thirtieth, Village Board meeting, I'll make a motion to approve. Any discussion?
No.
Favor? Okay, now we're at our public comment portion of the show, anyone with hands up or?
I don't see anyone, Mr. Chertan.
A quick question on the restrooms, what days will they be open?
They're going to be open seven days a week.
No, no.
Can you hear me?
Thursday through Monday.
Until Memorial Day.
Seven days a week.
No.
All right, no, that's not right, I spoke out of churn, sorry.
There's Thursday through Monday, Mike, until Memorial Day.
And then seven days.
I have a bad connection, so I'm not hearing everything.
Okay, they'll be, they'll be open Thursdays.
Thursday through Monday?
Yeah, until Memorial Day, and then we're going to close them.
Marie! And then open, 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 so open.
Anyone else, Michael?
I don't see anyone.
Okay, with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Night.
Enjoy Colorado.
Yeah, have fun.
Okay, we'll see you, I'll see you in a few days.